Come on in, have a seat. You don't have to wait out there.
A little obsequious.
Can I wait out there? Oh, you're more than welcome to. Okay, so we got that covered?
Yes.
We are just a little bit behind, so we'll...
Okay. Down here at the weed department, we've got some stuff called honey bone spray. We need tanks for bone down. It's virtually only seventeen, twenty gallons per acre.
It's pretty much all that.
I like to do that out or in the north.
Yeah, okay. That'll be fine. You said you ain't had any bone stuff?
Yes. It's got, uh, the...
Yeah.
It's like a body for trial, but only two gallons is worth about. If it's some reason, my case a little long.
Okay. That's Monday. You might reach out to the co-op or somebody and see if...
I'll probably stick it on the shelf out there and see if anybody wants to take it.
Okay.
Being twenty seventeen.
Probably is a lot of this.
Kind of all that.
Okay.
We got those the other day, the new noxious weeds that maybe come out of the woods. So I think I want to read about them or shoot you a picture.
That's all we need, one more noxious weed.
Yeah, five more.
Five more.
Yeah. Well, one of them's got an option, or two of them have an option right now.
Okay.
It's like that, they care already. Titan, which is AJW, which was last year, half of last week, and that's those.
Good.
Josh, where that was CDL, uh, last Friday.
Very good.
And I saw, and Walter, or CDL, students, I have... I emailed, repair email, how do you find, uh, paperwork about these, uh, real names? Uh, especially the fire marshal, I wanted to get him pushed back from him, so he was the fire marshal. Also, um, just everything I asked, I didn't approach. Uh, also got a call, our department came through, over two fifty four bridge out here. Finally, have not seen it yet, they said it was in the mail, so I'm gonna check. Is Christie, if anybody else has heard this either? They still don't have it mentioned up there.
Right.
And then Matt hit me up this morning, I was leaning into, he was wanting to borrow it. I told him, I was just getting it worked, and it's nice and out, it's bringing out in the years. It's not a war that I'm asking, it's like that.
Okay.
Maybe it'll be a problem with this.
I thought I got it. I was still wondering if everyone just said, "Bridge probably came through."
Did?
Yeah.
I said, "Don't have it in our hand?"
I know, you're already excited, I talked to you the other day about that.
Yep.
And you said something about two fourteen, and the road is behind Nivo. We need to something, have you gone down that road?
No, I haven't.
Last few days, take trip.
It's, okay.
We have worked on that, and...
Okay, that's coming out of the Nivo, the going around.
Yeah, two fourteen.
Because we're open on two fourteen. It's a terrible road. There's a spring in the front.
Yes, and he's got that burning.
Yeah.
And made big jump down the edge, and so it was washing. As it come down the hill, it was washing down absolutely the middle of the road.
Yep.
And we want music for all the, the lizards and stable for these roads. And so we're talking about all the answers. Please take a look.
The landowners don't want people down there anyway. They tend to do things they shouldn't be doing.
I understand.
People in other areas, I will bring that.
Yes, alright, so we put rock on I, two fifty four, two fifty eight, I six, two fifty four, two fifty eight. Two seventy eight, K L, that's finished up. The Apache, um, K two ten, the two thirty, four service lines, two two replacements. And including D two, the three ten, and Y point seven, four two washings. This week, we're going back to I six, two fifty four, two fifty eight, like it rock up J road. Two thirty, two eighty, no source, two two replacements, uh, two two K. That is done, like I said, we've started the equipment today, and then starting next Monday. Depending on the rain, uh, the storm, K road, ninety four hundred.
And so we're like, we should review. I'd like one. Zero. Uh, got a call from a family in Paterson County. And I sent them a check, I did call them in. And it's a zero south of K one sixteen, Markburg. And, uh, they called.
You were done all that Friday.
Absolutely.
Uh, I helped you, you know, these equipment, and angels working right there.
Who was out there?
Ethan.
Ethan, good. Yeah, that's all we're at here on the area to talk about. Ethan, right, okay. Thank you.
But I will make sure we're beyond doubt, but I'm surprised that he was... I said, we're down Friday.
I get confused because at Markburg, in the county line, it splits and goes south. We take care of that. North of Paterson County, how far north do they go?
Two fifty four.
Okay.
Yes, Chris gave me a, uh, the town, and spoke on the, uh, so it's all in room breaks. There's no room in Max, I'll reach out to him, too, I don't know. If you guys want to reach out to him also, it's three six four seven seven nine one. But I'm, like I said, I'm gonna reject him. Yep, I'll reach out to him also and see what's going on. But he says, "Don't in room breaks every time," so.
Yeah, and, and with that being said, if somebody calls and leaves a message, because I, I talked to somebody this weekend. Also, this said, they'll just call in typically, you know, a message.
Get in after their, uh, while...
If we can reach back out to them and say, "Hey," then that could be Tara's job. Hey, got your message, it's been given to A, B, or C.
Or put on the list.
Or put on the list, it's been given to Lynn, or Adam, or Scott to handle. Just wanted to let you know we did get your... That saves them from calling back in multiple times. Um, and I think will save in the end, again, it's a little bit of public service. Uh, so if we can, if we can do that, and that's really gonna be Tara or whoever replaces her.
Right, and I know that's been communicated to, um, so just see, you know, once we get our replacement figured out.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I would appreciate that, because that was one comment that the neighbor Mike made this weekend. He says, "I called in three times and left a message, I'm not sure if they ever got my message, because I didn't get a return call." Um, I know that's a little bit of a pain, but it's something I think is important.
I was just trying to make sure we were down to get that.
Then, did you have a conversation with the employee in, uh, the dump truck that, that has a GPS unit?
Yes.
Disabled?
Yes.
And how did that conversation go?
Did you have that conversation?
Yes, I did.
How did it go?
When he left, he took that piece out, it became unplugged because of the bend in the roads. And so, uh, many months, but that's when we have to get in. And it was like that, we, it's swollen, so we can't...
In the end, I think we missed something.
Okay.
The Dave already called you, he was on board, he was like that. Bryson told me that, okay, but we don't know.
Thanks.
Bryson told me that, he told us, "Zip tie, I can take whatever we gotta do soon." And so I saw Bryson that morning, and he said, "Zip tie," okay? And before he left the parking lot, it was disabled.
Okay.
Then, he called him, told him that, "Hi," he doesn't work. That's when they had a conversation, and he said it the second time. And we called Bryson, and he was like, "Well, I, I may not have plugged in, all right, so..."
Right, right, I'm sorry. Did Bryson come in today?
He's here.
It's all new. Okay, because I texted you about bringing him in on, to talk about GPS stuff.
All right.
If, if he has an opportunity, well, he can say something.
Yeah, I want, I, I want to find out about the, uh, GPS and blades, and it's supposedly already there, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, let's try it. But...
Okay.
I think we, we need to talk to him, find out how, how, what, where. Because supposedly, from, and here again, this is one of these old track of blade, from the one that we sold last, third in Mexico, away. I want to know how he's doing, and if we're able to do that right now, you know, what, what's going on? He does have a lot of old capabilities and stuff.
How about this, if you could run him back in about twelve or eleven forty five? And then he can just speak from here or whatever.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That would be, yeah, I'd like that. All right, let's do that. And then as far as, uh, I think it just needs to be stated to all employees that the equipment does not belong to them. It belongs to the county. They have the privilege of operating it through employment. If they don't like the equipment, they have the opportunity to go seek employment somewhere else. And I hope that is in vain.
Yes.
All right.
And that's been the way that the titles all say, Jackson County.
And if this continues to happen, we may have to help them find an employment. Okay, anything else? Uh, Neil Harvey called me, said, "Thank you very much for the work that he's done on hundred fifteen."
Hundred fifty, I've been on the S.
Yes, he was, he, he really represented us, so.
I had quite a few calls, and they, that was, it's quite much, yes.
It was all, okay.
Real quick, the, uh, spec community the other day, I'm a head sense, from the side of the man, are we gonna update our handbook to that?
Yes, thank you for reminding, we need to hand, update our handbook. That if you're, if you are using a CDL, and you are driving, or if you have a CDL, and you're driving a CDL required vehicle, you, you must have a headset on, hands free set, uh, to operate that on the phone. That's federal, please, yeah. So, we'll get that put into the handbook also.
Great.
Thanks. Thank you.
See you guys, thank you.
Good week, appreciate it.
One question on that.
Cheers.
Please will not be provided by the county, that's correct.
That's, that they're on...
I would say...
Because we do provide a radio, faculty radio, you can get that. Okay, Don? Rachel, is Rachel here?
Not yet.
Not yet, is she coming?
We'll check.
That's, that's fine, um, and then Pam? Pam Brown? No?
I haven't.
I, I, it's on the agenda, but Don, come on up. If you're, are you speaking for a group?
Oh, yeah.
Yourself, or?
Yeah.
Okay. And was, he can, uh, super late last night.
Dan was down there.
Rachel, Rachel, Rachel.
Okay.
All right. I do want to say, I went home last night from the farm, I took one fifty eight from E to P.
Yes.
And that part from E to G, I sure wanted to go gravel, because it's pretty bad.
It is, yeah. So, that is, uh, what we've been told, is that the tribe is, they have applied for a raise grant. I believe they've been approved for that. The first portion of that, we found out later, was K dot money, the three miles that's been redone. That was the worst portion of that, so from E back to the east, where the new pavement starts, would be the next phase. And the last phase would be from K, all the way to seventy five highway, which would just be a resurface. So, I drive, I drive that quite often.
Time frame on that?
Um, that's a great question. We don't, the tribe does not give us that information. Uh, we've asked, because one of the issues we ran into last time is they just started construction, shut one fifty eight down and diverted traffic off into the county. We had semis going across bridges that weren't rated, rated for that, and didn't. So, now they understand that they have to have permission from us before we have to approve all detours, so that we know that we're not destroying a bridge somewhere, or that, so we'll see if we get that. We actually approved the minutes of that back in Jan, December of twenty two, so when they came to us for that proof.
For that.
It's taken some time.
Yeah.
We, we hope, we believe that next summer will be phase two.
That's what I thought, but...
Well, from G to K, uh, sure is nice.
It is, it is.
Yeah.
Well, go ahead, Don.
Okay, uh, well, I wrote something up, and I'll just go ahead and read it, uh, and then I'll give you a copy that's signed by a few people who were... Just after talking with many people in and around Jackson County, we want to thank the commissioners for taking very seriously what happened at the planning... Excuse me. At the planning commission meeting on September fifth, and addressing it last Monday. As we all know, it can take too much money and time for every citizen to vote on every decision or law that needs to be made to govern each political region of our nation. Therefore, a republic or representative democracy is what our founding fathers gave us. In this type, in this type, each citizen has the right and responsibility to vote and make their voice heard. That's the seventh grade social studies teacher coming out. Anyway, we would think, we all agree, that our elected officials should live in the region, care very deeply for the well meaning of the people that live in such region, and that each elected representative should not be easily swayed by small groups of people that loudly show opposition to what they have researched, discussed in detail, and have come to the conclusion is best for the majority or the region as a whole. We are glad that in certain instances, where people requesting a special permit to build something out of the ordinary, like a commercial hog farm, or airplane runway, or a solar farm, that our government has certain regulations that are put in place to make sure the citizens have a chance to voice their questions, concerns, and opinions. And, and right there, I want to throw in, we understand that the planning commission is a group of volunteers, and they're not getting paid either, so we definitely want to back up the fact that, you know, we appreciate their time and, and their, the process. We are also thankful that you have taken your time these last two years on this issue, so you could research and come up with reasonable, logical, and sound regulations for solar that will help ensure that all citizens and land will benefit in some way from projects like these, and be protected at the same time. I also wanted to thank the executives, keeping their word that they would not submit a request for such permit during these last few years. That's all I have.
Thank you, man. Thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
Thank you, Rachel. No, I didn't have anything else here, the support, the power.
Bill, did you guys have, anybody else have comments?
You know, we, we all kind of went over what Don and we echo his sentiments, uh, we think that, uh, you know, his statements should stay.
And always, I mean, every situation, like this is a learning, you know, we can all learn, and so, you know. I'm good with that?
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet. So, we, we took very seriously the, the, the situation that happened in the zoning. Mr. Willis here, we had a conversation with him, we'll all apparently be in this morning. Uh, we'll make a decision on how we're gonna move forward with that position, uh, what we're gonna do. We believe that, um, we believe that it is very important that every citizen in this county has due notice if something's going to be voted on at a meeting like that.
And, and again, I'm sure, I couldn't guarantee if I was sitting there, I would have known it at the time either, so. Again, it's, it's taken care of, I'm sure, it was taken care of, and we understand that, so appreciate that.
You bet, you bet.
Just wanted to, yes. I just wanted to note to everybody, this is gonna start happening pretty soon, the regulations, so if you guys are interested, and want to keep abreast of that, please continue to keep your eye on this body and the hooking happening, so the people that are in the end. It's gonna be, all sides will be heard, and it's gonna be one where everybody needs to be attentive to this and be involved, yeah. If you're talking about the small, our republican nature of our governance here, that's what's gonna be tested, so be involved.
And that's why we're here.
Yeah. Applaud, you're up, yep.
Appreciate it.
Will you have special meetings then, or will the, you know, and the county commissioner?
That, that's a great question, so as Todd finishes up with some of the regulations, he's gonna bring it to us. We're going to go over it, make changes, talk through it, and then once we get a template, that template will be available for anyone who wants to pick up a template of that. It will go to the zoning and planning, uh, Kate will have a meeting, a regular meeting, or she chooses to call a special meeting, it's up to her. Uh, that information will go to them, they'll have an opportunity, uh, to talk through it, and that, that's the process, that's how it works, they can change any and all things with that.
And I'd like to, I'd like to put something there, too. The reason that we chose to go that route of us trying to come up with the regulations to then pass the planning committee to go over is because our council is here every Monday. Right? We tried to work through with him, which we haven't done since, you know, our council swapped, we haven't been counseled. Uh, so he's kind of hitting the ground running, trying to catch up with everything, right?
Yeah.
So, he is, that's, that's the reason that we are doing the regulations, the template, passing it to the planning committee, because if, as much time as we did put into it when we first started this two years ago, uh, and since, but, you know, that, and I want to say, too, that this is not the most important thing in county.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we have, we have some other things that we are working on, you know, behind the scenes, so, you know, that's, that's kind of way down the list. So, the, the cost factor for having, having Todd or Lee attend special meetings in the planning commission, which you guys aren't getting paid for, but we are still paying council. That is why it's a cost effective method to do it the way that we're doing it, so I just wanted to put that up there.
Yeah, and I'll, actually, I'll inject another, another level of, uh, set of highs we can put on.
And towards that end, I think what the question was, is that the process would be here, this meeting, as much as we could do it. But you would never go wrong if you're sitting there going, "I don't know, it's my own solar, it's being here during this time, and I'm here." And, and that's when the support should be done, so, um, it would be Monday, it would be now, or going afternoon, if we need to, or something like that, we need it. And if that means, and if we have to do some special, we'll try to get everybody clear on that.
And then it'll go to the zoning and planning, yeah, and they'll have all kinds of input at those meetings.
And that would be step two, and come back here, up to, up to this.
Seven cents, just as far as development's concerned. Any other questions? Okay. Yes?
I speak for myself, but being one of the members on zoning, uh, I thoroughly agree, this is the best way to go about it. We have every right, we're in the county, it's a twelve, seven fifty seven, it doesn't have to start with the planning commission level. The county can, the county commissioners can, like you do, the process, communities.
Right, or to what's been published, but yeah.
Yeah, I, I would only say that, uh, I, I, I would like to see more communication as a progress, a little bit better coordination between your board and ours.
In what way?
Just kind of any updates or input, or anything, uh, scheduling, just, and it doesn't have to be periodic, I mean, just once every...
Typically, I mean, Kate's here, if there's something that needs to be communicated to your board, uh, when it comes to, to this, it'll be communicated. We still have the thing right now, and as soon as we do, you'll get a full copy of it.
Thank you. This one?
I had some, I had some actual questions about going through preliminary review, but if we kind of had a very, if we had a very draft form, and what is the upper level guidance on what thought process is, and some of those things. So I don't know if that's been done now, or if it's here, or just, I think there's about six or seven things, and just kind of get a feel for it.
Sure.
That's all right, and then possibly go in and do it.
Yeah.
Favorite word of the day is agricultural economics.
Right.
Did I do that?
Pretty low there.
I mean, there's a lot of emphasis in the drafts we have, is that, is that such a special point here for you guys? Do you guys want to get into the big grime on that? I mean, my, my thought is, is agricultural tax, it's like, it's a plus on, on the faculty. You can do it without it, but if you put, you can put a plan in place, that's a plus on your...
Yeah, that's something that we want to look hard at, is how, you know, how we can implement that in your...
Well, yeah, and that's, I mean, that's the race point here, is there's, like, you don't, you're not required to do it, but if you do it, we, we're gonna be happy with it. If, or you will do this, you will have agricultural tax plan in place.
Yes, but, yes, I believe that was consistent, we wanted to go with on, on the agricultural tax, to have a plan in place.
Well, I was just gonna ask, would that, that would cover a lot of different things, correct? Like, for instance, native grasses that have, that bring in honeybees, and have honeybees that, I mean, not, I've seen a lot of different types of agri, you know, agriculture. I think a lot of, it depends on our climate also.
Yes.
You know, that's gonna, you know, be part of it, too, so. And then also conservation sections, I don't know if that would include...
The underlying point is always gonna be that you want, uh, a construction method that preserves soils in place, utilizes supportive farm soils, and, and doesn't waste things like that, so that, and it stops, you know, water drainage and degradation of those lands, so. I mean, the, and that's why I was kind of getting to that, because it seems to be that there is the idea that we're preserving lands with grasses and stuff like that from erosion versus full blown, you've gotta have a, I don't know, like, you know, grazing plan, or, you know, some places may not have that ability or that tire to go back, and that's kind of, it seems to me that if you put that in place, you probably added a lot to the meat bones of the meat. Do you want to be in the, the micromanagement of the farm business versus, you know, generally, his plan is what you get?
In my opinion, what we want to do is to preserve, and like you said, prevent erosion, to preserve the landscape as well as we can. And, you know, if they, if they decide they want to put in honeybees on the, you know, under the panels or something like that, nope. You know, there's, there's no kind of being regulations on something like that.
Yeah, but I don't, you guys don't want to be watching them, they're not...
No, I don't want to be the police officer, just going out there.
Well, that's what I was trying to say, and some, some of these go to that length and say, you know, okay.
Okay.
Um, that, that's, that's helpful. For whatever reason, the, the regs put this in front of you guys for approval, this change this to some, um, you think that's, you want it to the planning commission first?
I think the commission first.
Okay, because that was, for some odd reason, they always, instead of go to the board and county commission, they'll put that before the...
It will, it will go to the setting first.
There's some things about ground field sites.
Say, in your town?
Ground field sites?
Okay.
I don't know if you guys have any, but you can, you know, if those are, I didn't know until I looked it up. Basically... I don't know if you guys have any, but you know, you know what those are, I I didn't know until I looked it up, it's basically decommission industrial.
That I'm aware of.
Yeah, I mean, Douglas County has a farm land plan, if you remember that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, I think that's what we're talking about, you know, maybe if they just present, if you don't have any, there's just no reason to have it. Okay, I remember some, I don't say no fad is on site, but.
Yeah, no fad systems, battery battery energy storage systems, there will be no battery and restoring systems, they're, so, they'll all be transmitted.
Okay, see, that would probably take care of a lot of noise.
Yep.
Um, but I think that, the other thing is, is there's not a lot of buy-in or thought about what the owner, the operator is on point on a lot of this, which means, to my mind, a less order, right, it's a lease, you guys want any control over the actual owner of the property?
Yes, there, I believe that if if we're looking at the rate right now, that there was a stipulation in there that, uh, and don't quote me because I'm I'm, sorry, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think, uh, there was a regulation that we wanted to put in there that any time that the owner was going to uh sell any portion, that it would have to be approved by the county commission, and then, what?
Reapply, yeah, reapply.
Uh, it wouldn't be reapply, but but if they sold, then they would have to come in and, because we wanna keep track of who owns now the energy system, all the way down the line, I don't care, but it's.
I think that's more of a personal thing, so.
Well, that's that's, yeah, the two form things, if they, certainly if they buy the land, and you got, if if the seller developed, buys the land, and the owner of the ground, then that's, I'm thinking that this may be a lease process, where they lease the ground, and somebody still owns it, who's just an individual in the farm business.
Okay, okay.
And that, the accountability of that format would suggest the owner has to have some statement, it's a bit more of a bit, you know, what I'm seeing.
You're talking about the land itself, not the energy company.
Yeah, do they have duties in this regard, do they have the, I mean, do they have, if, you know, mainly, is if the operator fails, fails out and losing the birch, what do they got, what are their?
I mean, what are their responsibilities?
You guys are talking talking about bonding things, you know, with bonds and insurance and all that stuff, and you gotta think about, well, what happens when that happens, and does the owner have a right to something, as well, are they a third party to the bonds, are they, it's, how do you guys get on the property with the plan?
Correct.
Yeah, so, that's my thought process, is you gotta be.
So, there needs to be language within, that if if the lease were abandoned to site, then uh, and and we'll say that Jim owns it, uh, that that right has to be already in writing, that the money that we have in an escrow account can be used, and we do have the full right to hire a company to come in and decommission.
Yeah, and then the owner's connected to that, and responsible to ultimately, but is what happens if that fund is done and not?
That's why we visit every every three years, uh, to make sure, and it will be done by an independent uh agency that can give us a true number of what decommissioning would actually cost.
Todd, now, um, say, hypothetically, I have fifty acres out there, and allows panels on that property, are you also referring to the fact that I leased that land to someone that's her, who she wants?
Okay, I'm just talking about the 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 operator, and one of the one of the the regs, the operator is, and it's, I always put that as the owner of panels, and how they're attached to the land is the ownership lease, or something in between, um, so, if that's separate, then we've gotta figure out, get the whole size and.
That's what I'm saying, I own the pasture, I get money from, hypothetical, I don't own a lot of it, uh, put panels on it, and then I decide my neighbor needs that extra land for their sheep, so, is that an offshoot, or is that by the way?
That would be whatever's in your lease or lease agreement with the energy company, so, I mean, if they say no, you can't put any any livestock on it.
Okay, but we're not strictly, you know.
They're all, yeah, but that's not, our end of it's going to be, basically, the the owner's got to know, but they're staking this is, because when, you know, when everything goes great, we'll never, we'll never hear, if anything goes wrong, then the owner can't wash their hands of it too, and doesn't wanna be in a position where they're unable to correct, or needs to correct, and this comes from, just a personal experience on my part, because before I became the municipal slash county lawyer of the city, so, you have to do a lot of work in coal mining, in the service of Kansas, and there's a, there's a full reclamation act for coal mines, um, which are pretty nasty bits of business for service men, and that was, the the tension always was between the three parties, which was the coal extraction company, the regulator, and the ultimate owner of the land, and those, there were a lot of owners of land who got upset because promises that were made were not kept, and they were on the hook, so, you gotta be sure, and keep everybody on that case.
So, I'm not speaking for all assigned landowners, but I know with my experience, there was a comprehensive going over the lease beforehand, and making sure that that fit within my long-term goal for ownership and stewardship of that land, making sure that there was a bond in place, that the decommissioning would be cared for within a certain timeframe, so that I knew that my asset was protected, um, because, yeah, you you don't wanna be left with a mess, all responsible landowners would agree with that, I believe.
And we're trying to give, we're trying to make sure you have the tools and regs, too, to to, even if that lease, you know, oh, I know this bunch of lawyers will come and start hammering away at it, that's what we do, um, but we wanna give you an extra, if we can give you an extra equipment to help, we wanna make sure that.
An extra layer of protection.
Yeah, and I appreciate what you're saying, our, but from our perspective, and I know you guys are responsible, but if there is a landowner who is not responsible, that's, we've gotta make sure that that is covered.
And the county, as as far as I know, is never involved in discussing leases, or dealing with leases, like, what you guys are doing, so, you know, we're we're venturing into an area where we we don't know what deals between you and whoever, but we have, we're gonna talk about those guidelines that we have, hopefully, we don't have the thousand-foot level that keeps everybody on, you know, on task, to make sure of the, that, everybody who resides here, and it takes a little bit out of the company that's venturing in, well, that's what's going on, because that's the concern, is keep keep Jackson County real property intact and kept.
Was there, did you, you said you've been looking through regulations, is there anything about the spacing between the panels in the regulations, have you seen anything like that?
Um, there there is, um, but, um, again, we're gonna build a template, and so, that's gonna go to zoning and planning, and that's where that will be discussed, I I couldn't tell what exactly is.
Yeah, we've got some levels of that, because there's there's spacing between the panels, there's buffer zones from, you know.
You know, spacing off the off the ground, the lowest edge, um, again.
From the front of the road, from the road, from neighbors, from residents.
Yeah, I know, I was going back to the agricultural takes and making sure there was enough spacing between each row, so that it can be used for something else.
Yeah, and that's, I think that's what'll be discussed, because that's part of, too, I think, preserving the soil, would be the grass.
Right.
Between can can stay in the use of. So, oh, that was, uh, I think that was a name for it, so, there's just, some high and stuff, we'll plug one.
I also have, looked at my notes previously, that uh, having dealt with the government on building, um, there should be, and I believe we talked about impact on environmental studies, switch translates to be as Native American burial grounds that will be in place, that we make sure that uh, there's no disturbance, um, throughout that experience with that, and of course, we also have talked about recently, about uh continuous monitoring of soil and water atmosphere, and atmosphere, so, that has been previously discussed, monitoring the soil, make sure erosion, there's no erosion, things like that, so, yeah, why not?
Is there, I mean, there was mention of water, but I don't recall ever seeing an issue of that, and.
Yeah.
You guys, I mean.
Well, if if you came up in monitoring the soil to make sure that there's no.
But, stormwater versus, I mean, I mean, panels, you can water themselves, and it's possible.
Sorry?
Do the panels use water?
No, no, it would be runoff.
No, okay, so, that's all stormwater, okay?
Yeah.
All runoff, okay, I was considering that.
Okay.
I would like to add, um, there is somebody with the team.
I'm sorry, state name, if you want.
Uh, mainly, um, with the uh company, there is a surveyor, and they are trying to be as effec- effective as possible, they have, um, species of concern, environmental impacts, cultural impacts, because even if you go and they say this is where it's at, they're still gonna look everywhere, just because there are different things they don't know about, and they're trying to be as conscious as they can, culturally, environmentally, and on the species level, because there are some species of concern in this area, like the tapir shiner, and different types of birds, and her state insect law, so, they're just trying to be very conscientious of that, and they take, they do a very thorough study of that.
Good.
Those were the heads.
Okay.
And I'd I'd like to say something on your point, I think it's probably, and you said the company, so I I I just wanna make it clear that, uh, when we start looking at things like that, we'll probably, uh, I think that's a problem, we will require a third party to come in and look to.
Somebody who's independent.
Yeah, an independent study, so, just so everybody understands that.
All right, thanks.
Mike, is is there also anything that you would like to be able to convey to Kate, over and Sarah, that I could bring back to them, or?
Yeah, yeah, we've just gotta get get through the regulation, and then, if there is a company that applies for a special use permit at that time, and they think they can live within those regulations on zoning and planning, if they get approved, um, that's the way the process will work, um, again, we're not building them around anybody. Yeah. All right. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I was on the panel around.
Thank you.
I was on the agenda today to speak about the solar.
Yeah.
So, I, just for the record, I was in here before ten thirty, and the solar meeting had already started, so I, some of what I was gonna talk about might have already been addressed, um, to, um, this was put before the planning commission, I read in the newspaper that, um, the board sent it back to the plan, planning commission, because there was a public hearing, but I'm just bringing it to the commissioner's attention, there was a public hearing.
There was, there was.
There was a public hearing with the commissioners there, with about, a couple of years ago, right across the hallway in here.
Yes, ma'am, but.
And we talked, and the subject of a moratorium came up, and somebody on the floor asked for a show of hands, who was for and who was against this, uh, you have a moratorium on here, ninety percent of the people wanted a moratorium.
I see.
So, when the commissioners sent it back to the planning commission, full well knowing.
Said, all right.
That the public wanted a moratorium. The planning commission sent it back requesting a moratorium, I read in the newspaper, I can read it out of the newspaper if you want to.
I'm I'm just not following you, they had a they they, resolution sent to them from this board to put a two-year moratorium on wind.
Okay.
They chose, Mr. Willett chose.
I just made the motion.
You made the motion, but you also went on for a paragraph plus to add in something that was not given two weeks' notice, or the the public correct notice, to the public, so that anyone could come in and speak about it before, and they made a motion, it was seconded, and it was passed. Do you see the problem with that, Pam?
I understand.
Do you see the problem with it?
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm calling attention to is there was already a public meeting, the the commissioners knew what the public wanted, because there there was a hundred people in that room.
Ms. Brown, Ms. Brown.
Yes.
That was two years ago, okay, that was two years ago, in the paper, you said you read the paper, did you see the public notice for the wind moratorium?
I did not.
Okay, there was a public notice in the paper that has to be published X amount of times, eight, two times, three times, what is it?
Once.
Okay, once, two weeks before the meeting?
Twenty days, probably.
Twenty days before the meeting, that public notice in no way, shape, or form stated solar, so, anyone who was for or against solar had no opportunity to speak at the public meeting in the planning commission, the 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 public meeting that was, that I attended also over across the hall before I was ever elected, has no bearing on what happened in the planning meeting this time, none whatsoever.
Okay, I'm just calling it to your attention, that the commissioners know.
Sure.
That you might not have been a commissioner in time.
I was not a commissioner in time, I was across the hall, and I was there.
Someone on the floor asked for a show of hands, and ninety percent of the people in that public meeting wanted a moratorium.
And could I ask you a question? How long did they want the moratorium for at that age?
I think it was twenty-four months.
September of twenty-two, correct?
Eighteen, eighteen.
What is today?
It's eighteen, I think.
September of twenty-four, that's twenty-four months, that we've had no movement on any application that I am aware of, so, the moratorium's a moot point, is it not, from two years ago?
Well, I'm just calling it to your attention.
We already, we already know that, Pam.
I appreciate that, thank you for coming.
Okay, I'll also have another question, but I I would like, um, answers from the commissioners, did or did not the commissioners, the county of Jackson County sue Nextera at some point, and I don't know what it was over, but there was a, some kind of issue, that the county had some business with Nextera, the county had to sue, so, why, if, please elaborate on that, because I really don't know all the details. And if the county sued Nextera, why would they ever trust Nextera again?
So, actually, uh, we did sue them, and it was prior to all of this being on the commission, it was set up by previous commissioners, to have Nextera pay for the renovation of one of our roads that they used as a haul route, when they put in the Nima Hough County wind, there was money set aside, and I believe a bond, and I will tell you, I had a, got a bad taste in my mouth when I first came in here, because they hadn't paid us, we asked for it, and then finally, we went to the attorney and said, hey, if they're not going to pay us to fix our roads that they use as a haul route, we're gonna take you to court, boom, it all went away, because they provided us money to fix our roads that they used as a haul route, so.
And money's been spent, the road's been rebuilt.
And it's, and it's darkened road, so, regardless, that's what you're referring to, that, I don't know when it was set up, maybe twenty eighteen, K three, around?
I don't recall.
Yeah, but it was to protect the county, and it was in place.
And I I'd like to make a point also, because you keep referring to Nextera, and I I wanna make it clear, you were not in here when I said this before, we are not writing regulations for Nextera, we are writing regulations for any, any solar company who wants to come in and try to fit their business plan into our regulations, I don't care who it is, it's it's Nextera, fine, if they can fit it into that, that's fine, if it's Southern Solar from Florida, I don't care, if they cannot fit their regu- fit their business plan into our regulations, then there won't be a solar facility in Jackson County. there won't be a solar facility in Jackson County. And another point I'd like to make is, this was a bond that the previous commissioner set up. I've said all along, I don't want a bond. I want the money in escrow, we'll give them so long to put the money into escrow, because they're not going to want to drop a chunk of change like that into an escrow account right off the bat, okay? So they will, they will have a time period, five years, six years, to put that in there, and it will be, be revisited every three years by an independent third party to make sure that there is money set aside for, uh.
Enough.
Yeah, enough money set aside every three years, so that, uh, for, uh, re-commissioning, recommissioning, or decommissioning for roads, for resiliency, for the surrounding communities. All of these will be in the escrow account, not a bond. So we won't have to go through the, oh, we got to sue them, okay?
Like a tax, uh, like the lack of tax at the state of Kansas does not allow us to collect. I, I identify it as like a baseball field, you have one base, two base, three base, four base. That needs to be in place, if they don't want to do it, then so be it, it won't happen. But whatever company, as Commissioner Pruth said, we're not just writing it for one, we're writing it for the entire county for other energy companies. Um, I'll take you back, most of you probably didn't live here, they're in that time, in the seventies, I grew up just east of town. We had the chance to put a January energy center, but the commissioners voted it out. That would have been a tremendous asset for this county. All they did is go across the county line, put it in Pot County. And we have suffered since that, but loss of revenues, the Onega Hospital gets money from it, the Onega School Districts, and probably other school districts too, along those lines.
Okay, since, I just, I just.
Mr. Hoffman?
I just asked on to January Energy Center.
No, enough. You, you have an attorney, you'll need to go through your attorney to our attorney.
To do what?
To communicate with this board. You, you sent the letter to us, you started that process, so that's the process that, that you want to communicate with us. Until our attorney is told, uh, otherwise, you don't get to communicate with us one-on-one. Go through your attorney.
You got it. All right. Yes, Pam?
Mr. Hoffman is a member of the public, is he not? Is he not able to speak in public?
I'll let our attorney explain this.
Does he, I mean, he relinquishes those rights to speak at a public meeting?
No, he doesn't relinquish any rights, he hasn't relinquished any rights. He has chosen himself to, to seek this method of communication, because he has, uh, I think more than a political issue here. So I'm not going to go into detail about it, I think you both are quite respectful, at least, uh, the legal side of this, um, and we hope that that will continue. Anything else?
Can he put on the agenda, speak?
Uh, his lawyer can come sit in front of us and communicate if that's the way it's going to be.
He, his lawyer.
He pays taxes in a cabbie, he can't put on the agenda.
His lawyer can talk to me too about. He chose changing, changing that, that setup. If he wants to become a, a public commenter, then we'll, we'll address the way that it's done.
Yeah, and I'm all for it.
And I am too. But again, understand, he made that decision, not us.
So if you go, you hire a lawyer to represent you, you can no longer speak at a public meeting, even though you're a taxpayer?
We're not going to, I'm just going to call him, all to, I mean, again, this is, this is regarding things that are not part of this process.
Right.
And, and the can be in order, where, where this is, where he can have that free, but there has to be an understanding that it's not our understanding right now.
That's correct. Uh, any, any other comments from anybody else? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Yep.
Have a great day.
Thank you. Can read that, ask Pam?
We've got, that's your comment.
Did Chris give you?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
All right, thanks.
All right, Todd, what else?
It seems like that was most of what I got right now.
Okay.
Uh, I guess, maybe I lost track of this, no? There was a.
Um, not right now, I don't, I don't have anything, uh. Dylan, do you have anything?
No, not right now.
Okay.
I'll do it a little later, maybe.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Probably you tracked it down on the grid, on the freeway.
Yep.
Yes.
I just, I think I have my notes I would get, legal.
You didn't get that yet?
Well, maybe I did, I was trying to find an email, yeah, yeah. Where is this? But that couldn't be this, because I think this is the one I had, so.
That's the one on two forty-six, that?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think this is, somebody gave this to me so I could see what they had.
Oh, that's, yeah, I think that, uh, they gave that to you last week to show you the.
I think it was.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, just, it's, it's legal to be in that.
Okay. Yeah, two forty-six.
Two forty-six.
And I don't know if we can talk about it, if you're ready.
I think I'm just second-hand to it.
Some other stuff we just heard, maybe, because more about solar stuff, I haven't yet. We need to talk about the removal. I think it probably might go fast, maybe.
Commissioner, zoom, Commissioner.
Hang on, just a second.
Yeah, was the question about zoning commission, commissioner, yeah, so I, I haven't gotten more of that yet, I still don't know.
Yes.
Okay, got you, we'll do that, yep. Probably next time. Um, like I said, I was gone, I've gone and went past through the regs and probably do a lot bigger overall than any original thought, but, but I'm trying, I'll try real hard to do. Either have more questions where you have some good draft, next time. We'll start talking. Anything else you need to hang around for, or?
All right.
A hospital?
Yeah, there'll be a second one, but it's for.
Sales tax, uh, it's going to be a shift to a possibility.
I can't hear.
Yeah, or you can ask them yourself.
Thank you, this is Lee Crap, thank you.
You're hired.
Yeah.
Sales, they want to do a sales tax because of the continuous strain on rural community hospitals, their critical care access hospitals. This is my last month of a lot of pleasure being on the board. Um, they've been talking about it for a while, and I don't know exactly what our presentation is going to be, because everybody can't come in and do a sales tax if they approve, I can say that, I understand that, but maybe they would like to piggyback on something we possibly could do, I'm just going to, out there, I'm not saying that's the way to go.
We need some election once after next time around, but.
Uh, probably a year and a half, as Keith always said, that is an investigation.
We're going to do a special month to do a sales tax.
Eighteen months, yeah.
We're going to do a special, you do a special, or you do a special, I said.
Uh, yes.
It would be, it would be in the fall of twenty-five.
If you choose to move, they have a.
Special question.
You have, you still have a, you still have an election.
Yes.
Okay, so you wouldn't have to have a special.
No pressure.
Yeah, I bet you never, you know, seems, at the very least, if there is probably a thing, and look, there's method. What you're saying is, is that it's county authority, but it's going to be asserted designated in this, in the court, the resolution that's voted on, that the proceeds would go to this town, which is under the option.
Hypothetically, can they go to the city and have a special city tax that wouldn't be a county tax as well? Because I know they're, they're talking to the city too, they have their own, we have ours if we go that route, or any other.
Yeah, I don't know that, I think the city, the city has a specific, specific structures due overall, so, but against them, it's the same question I've never had before, is the, the grace, the, the difference being you and the city can designate a tax for sunset, but is for a specific use.
Yes, right.
The city will say, the city generally uses a city, it's a special use. Um, I don't know that they have an authority on their, on themselves, you know, but you know, they have a right to go and get a sales tax, so.
But you mean the hospital?
Yeah.
Seattle, I think, you.
Yeah, all you're doing is saying that's a good use.
The city has a special tax that, uh, was re-voted on like a couple of years ago, I think, specifically for infrastructure, so that's how they designed that too. Now, this may be specifically for, I don't know, I haven't seen, you know, like I said, I'm small, I suppose, so.
Well, yeah, if you guys are willing to take that hit, you know, that's, that's fine, that's what it is, I mean, you designate it that way, it's going to go there, it's basically, and it might, it probably can against the limitation, percentage limitation, you may as well.
I think it's important that we have the meeting first on the thirtieth to allow a public comment on whether to even have any kind of official sales tax before we thoroughly have much of a conversation of how much it would be, or who would be getting what, but, um.
Because I, I would like to see, you know, in this discussion with the sales tax, uh, to be used for, you know, uh, property tax relief, and I would also like to see a half a percentage or a percent, you know, one point or a half a point or whatever put for economic development, because that was one other thing that we kept hearing, uh, during the revenue neutral meeting and during the budget meeting, is we need to pursue that, we need to pursue that, so.
And, and I, I would agree with you, Mark, but I'm only going to be interested in putting money towards economic development if there's a plan. Um, if we don't have a plan, to me, there's no such saving.
Then, then I think you need to be so working on that.
Yeah, there needs to be some sort of plan. We, we've done that in this county, uh, in, in the past, prior to us being commissioners, we would save money for certain things. There was never a plan in place to develop that and use that money for, for that, so.
And I think, I think you go along with that. We need to have a director, per time, whatever, to be able to go out and look for those opportunities. Because if we don't go out aggressively pursue them, then there, there's going to bypass this work with that.
So, and, and, you know, there's always that outlier legislation, you know, that's what I think, but if you're talking, if you've got the limitations, you want to go above and beyond and go for the plus luxury, and maybe that's what you're doing. Kind of harsh things all together and just go to the representing and get the special.
Well, what, what I meant is if we're, if we're setting one percent.
Yeah.
That's what we're trying to do, one percent, and nine tenths of that percent is going to go towards property tax relief, and one tenth is going to go to economic help.
So really, it's, I mean, it's going to be a general use, uh, to, to reduce property tax, you know, the need for additional money.
So we'll, like I said, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, I've heard from people that believe it's the best way to, to tax people, uh, to generate funds, and I've heard from people who don't want it, because they own businesses and.
Sure. Same here.
So, again, it was brought up in the revenue neutral, so that's the reason for, for bringing it up, and I'll put it out in the public.
And I want to make clear to you that, you know, this is not something that we're doing just because it was brought up in revenue neutral. We talked about this for two years, actually, about, and you just have, just pull the trigger and do it.
Hire good stuff before we talk about it.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
Anybody else you think of?
No, and I will, I will be reaching out to our representation to, to at least put the bug in their ear that, that this could be coming and what they would need from us.
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay, I'm going to talk to Francis, he's a.
Probably so, yeah. I've got a couple of local guys too, that are going to be in the office here, first of the year, and have a help.
No.
Yeah.
I just think Francis has, he just is, uh, you don't have to hit the ground and try to figure out where, where it's after this, Campbell, he's good. These other guys are going to have a little bit of learning through it, and Francis can hit the ground running.
Running, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Um, can I get a zoom on Lucy? Please. Set it off. Yeah, well, it's, uh.
I don't want to be there, but I'm there.
Okay. You want to take off? Which one?
I have nothing. You have a picture?
Yeah, I like to train kids there once. Her daughter. Yeah. I have been to some of the Tony's.
Tom Seeler, thank you.
He's, uh, he's the guy.